Hey there. Welcome to episode 15 of the Open Floor Podcast. I'm Ali Musallei.
And I'm Ari Narian. Today, we'd like to focus on a topic that is often not given the attention it deserves: Local politics. While the US Senate, House of Representatives, and White House are certainly huge actors in American politics, we can't overstate the role of local governments in all of our lives.
In Lexington, Massachusetts, the main government's structure is known as the Select Board, which is made up of elected town residents who collectively make policy decisions for the town on matters including infrastructure, education, and the local economy.
In this episode of the podcast, we want to highlight the importance of the Select Board to our communities and discuss local politics as a whole. We are delighted to have Mr. Joe Pato, who is a member of the Lexington Select Board since 2013, to talk about these topics with us today. Welcome to the podcast.
Good afternoon, Ali and Ari.
Now, just to start off our discussion, could you talk a little bit about your background and your life before politics?
Sure. So I, by profession, am a research computer scientist. I worked for Hewlett Packard for almost 30 years, and I ended my career as a visiting scientist at MIT. I focused on information security, and one of the things that I've been happy to do is be able to apply some of my technical background in what I do for municipal governance.
Okay, and so when did you decide that you wanted to join the Lexington Select Board? And what specifically motivated you to join it? And then could you describe the path to you becoming a Select Board member?
Sure. The, I became interested in politics as a teenager. I was my high school vice president for my freshman and senior classes and went to model congresses and model UNs as a student. I had no idea I would ever be a Select Board member at that time, but it did, it did spark my interest in public policy. The, my road to the Select Board here in Lexington, which at the time was called the Board of Selectmen before we took the gender out of the name, the, was as I approached the end of my professional career, I began to have time available to give back to the community. So I ran for town meeting and won, and in some ways, that might have been the hardest race I had. The, and I served on town meeting for two terms, or I was elected twice, and served on the Appropriation Committee for three and a half years. The Appropriation Committee is one of the two finance committees for the town and is tasked to review all budgetary requests that go to town meeting. By state law, town meeting can't pass a budget without having a report from the Finance Committee explaining what that budget request is and making recommendations. What I found was that was a really good way to take a look at everything that was going on in town that had any kind of financial effect and gave me good exposure. So I served there for four years and was the liaison to the Select Board, or the Board of Selectmen, and decided that while I liked providing feedback and guidance, I actually wanted to get my hands a little dirtier with respect to formulating policy and, and carrying it forward. So in 2013, I had retired from Hewlett Packard and decided that I would run for a seat on the board. And I've run, so I'm finishing my ninth year now, so it's, it's been an interesting run.
Could you describe more about campaigning for these positions, both in the town meeting and the Select Board? You mentioned that it was a hard race to become a town meeting member, so how exactly did that work?
So town meeting is, is a, our representative governments, it's the legislative body for Lexington, and the, and that's true throughout Massachusetts. This is sort of a quirk of New England states and Massachusetts in particular, where governance is a participatory democracy, it really is. Many communities are open town meetings, which mean that any voter in town can come to the town meeting, and that's where the budget is passed. Bylaws are, are made, general bylaws and zoning bylaws and the like. In Lexington and about 35 other larger towns in, in the state, we have a representative town meeting. That means that voters elect voters to participate in town meeting, and the, we have nine precincts with 21 members in each precinct, so that's 189 voting town meeting members. For me, I, I live in precinct two. The year I ran, there typically are, are seven seats that come up, a third of the, the group for that precinct. And some years, there aren't enough candidates, and other years, there is, are contested races. As I recall, the year I ran, it was contested, and it meant I had to get my name out. So I sent out postcards with some key positions that I thought were important for how the town would move forward. I printed out flyers and walked around my precinct, putting flyers at doors. You know, each precinct has on the order of 2,000, maybe 3,000 voters, so 2,500 households, probably. Not all of those voters vote in municipal elections, and I think we'll talk a little bit about that later. But so what I did is I got information from the town clerk on who were the frequent voters or the ones who typically will go out, and I made sure to leave information at those houses, which made it a little cheaper and, and made it so that it was more likely to have a return. And I did get elected. The, right, and it, it was a really interesting experience. I managed to speak with some residents about key issues, but I'll tell you that most people aren't at home or don't answer their door during the day. So it wasn't, it was a lot of shoe leather being eaten up and not a whole lot of conversation.
That sounds like a really interesting experience, even in local politics, because as we know, the news mostly covers our federal representatives, our congressmen, obviously the presidential race, but people often forget about local politics, which is again, why we're having this episode. So I know you've already done a pretty good job of this up to this point, but for the people who may not know or understand how the structure, the structure of local government in Lexington works, could you give a brief explanation of all those moving parts? And also, what exactly is your job as a Select Board member?
Sure. So I already mentioned that town meeting was the legislative branch. They're the, the group that passes bylaws and budgets. The Select Board is the executive branch, and we make policy for the town. The town meeting goes back to the colonial era, pre, pre-creation of the revolution, and it, the Select Board or the Board of Selectmen were the selected individuals from the community that would perform the function of town meeting year-round, so that not every resident had to come and weigh in on all decisions along the way. And, and so we do that, have that function, but we're limited by, by our town charter, the Selectman Town Manager Act, and by state law that, on where our power is. So we can't just decide to go spend money. We can't just decide to make a, a new bylaw or a, or change a zoning regulation. But there are a lot of things that we do administer throughout the year, and they range from things like we are the, the traffic safety officers for the community, we are the, the local liquor authority, so we, we are the group that will grant liquor licenses to restaurants and packaged stores. And there's a whole enumeration of powers that the Select Board has that are in the state law. Then the, the, the last part is, you know, we are policy, and, and all of these elected positions are volunteer positions, we're not paid, so we have professional help. And the day-to-day operations of the town are delegated to the town manager. So the town manager is the, the chief executive for the actual execution of functions in the town, making sure that garbage services are, are operating properly, that the police force is operating properly, that, you know, the streets are safe. And we have oversight over that and, and direct, so the town manager executes within the policies that we establish as the, the chief executive elected board. Then, one thing that is interesting that I want to correct on, on your introduction was you talked about the Select Board being responsible for schools, and we're, we're not. There is an elected school committee that is the board that is responsible for the policy of schools. What the Select Board is responsible for are things about bringing things to town meeting and budgetary elements for planning for capital expenses like school buildings and the like, but we have no direct control about how education is conducted in the community. That's the school committee and the school superintendent. And then the last bit is that there's one other major elected board, and that is the Planning Board. So I've spoke about zoning bylaws as distinct from general bylaws, and zoning bylaws are all about what kind of building can occur in town, where are there residential districts, commercial districts, how tall can a building be, how large a lot? That's under the direction of the Planning Board, but just like we don't get to just say, here's the budget, they don't get to say, here are the new bylaws, zoning bylaws. They can propose them, they can make recommendations on a zoning bylaw that's proposed by a citizen, but it's town meeting, that legislative body, that will then hear, debate, and decide whether or not to pass a particular zoning bylaw or general bylaw. So those are the, the three main bodies: the legislative body, the, the elected officials for the, the executive operations, and then the staff that are, are executing day-to-day.
Well, firstly, thank you for the correction for the introduction, and also thank you for the very detailed explanation you just gave of the whole structure. And I think one thing that you mentioned is that the Lexington Select Board can be a multitude of things and can address a multitude of different topics, but I guess for each specific individual, or maybe for most politicians, whether on the local level or in a general level, may have a few key issues that they focus on during their time in office. And so what have your main goals been as a Select Board member?
So I've had a really keen interest in, in a few key areas. One is sustainability, climate change, and making sure that we as a community are doing as much as possible for reducing our emissions and behaving responsibly, and that we are planning for adaptation, that we're, we're recognizing that there is change in our climate around us, and that's going to create different demands on our buildings and different demands on our water infrastructure, especially our, our stormwater infrastructure and the like. So that's one big area that's been very important to me. Another is that we provide proper, safe infrastructure, and that's things like roadway safety. I've been a proponent for the townwide reduction in speed limits to 25 in, in the backroads, 25 miles an hour. I pushed for a lot of changes in the way the center is configured, and that we're in the process now of, of building a center streetscape project that is going to lead to safer crosswalks, safer sidewalks. There is a reduced speed limit in, in the center, and lighting that should be a whole lot better for pedestrians, cyclists, and, and automotive traffic. But that infrastructure is, it's easy to think about streets and the like from a safety perspective, but it's also that we have adequate staffing in our public safety departments in, in fire and police and emergency medical, that they're working in buildings that are healthy for them and that provide the needed equipment and technology for them to be able to work well. And equally, infrastructure for me really also speaks to our education system in town. And as I said, as a Select Board, I have no direct influence on the education policy, but it can support that we fund the school system well and that we are planning for what change in demographics bring to us. And I think you are familiar that over the past decade, we've had fairly large increases in our student population. And I, I was chair of the Select Board for two years in 2014 to 2016, and one of the things that I helped drive during that period of time was a consensus plan for the construction of new elementary schools that were larger and that would accommodate the growth we were seeing, as well as expanding the existing size of our middle schools. The project that we haven't been able to execute on yet is the high school, which is clearly overcrowded and long overdue for a replacement or expansion, and we're hoping for that over the next five years or so. The problem with high schools are, they are very expensive. So the last piece that I focused on is how can we make our financing be less of a burden on taxpayers in the community? And that really speaks to economic development in, in town. How do we take opportunities for economic development and have that built out in a way that both honors the, the community that we are, it does so in a environmentally sustainable way, isn't going to be adding to our carbon footprint and the like, but, but is adding to the viability of our businesses in town? As you probably know, we have a fair number of life sciences companies that exist in our two commercial corridors, and we are encouraging them to adapt to using more sustainable mechanisms in their processes and in their construction. So those are the, the key issues, and I think one other thing that's really important is how do we approach getting to resolution of issues? And I, I really believe in participatory democracy and that everyone's voice needs to be able to be heard and listened to. It doesn't mean that everyone gets what they want, but it does mean that there's no inside track. Everyone has a, a role and, and equal opportunity.
Thank you again for that fantastic overview of a bunch of issue, and as high schoolers, I know Ali and I know about the issues with infrastructure in education, having gone through both Lexington High School and the middle schools, and as for me, the elementary schools, which have received expansions recently, as well as the middle schools. So I'm glad to hear that you're working on that, because I'm definitely in dire need of change. And again, as you mentioned, enrollment in our school district is increasing significantly every year as people kind of flock to Lexington just for that education. People worry about how the quality of teaching that can be provided will be affected as classrooms become crowded and teachers become overwhelmed by the increasing amount of students that they have to contend with. So I know you've talked about this again a little bit, but what has the Select Board done to maintain that the high standard that Lexington expects of its town schools and to address this growing issue of overcrowding?
Well, as I said, primarily what we've been doing is planning for the necessary capital growth, so building structure. One of the things that we started about 10 years ago was something called the, it's the Capital Fund. That's actually not the name, but I'm blanking on the name at the moment, but it's, it's a fund where we've been putting money aside every year to make it so that when we hit a large project, we're able to draw some money out of there to pay for expenses for that project. As you might know, most of our revenue comes from property taxes, and most of our property tax comes from residential payers. So when we start on a large new project, we often will go to the community, to the voters, and ask for a debt exclusion vote, which allows for, the way property taxes work in Massachusetts is that you can only increase them by two and a half percent each year without going back to the voters and asking for what's called an override. But if you have a capital project, you can go to the voters and say, will you allow us to increase your property tax to cover the debt service? And debt service is like a mortgage. We issue bonds and pay them back over 20 or 30 years. And the, can we exclude that payment from the limits of the two and a half percent increase? And we, and voters have been fairly supportive of a lot of the projects. The, the two elementary schools, Estherbrook, then Hastings, were debt exclusion projects that, that the voters were all overwhelmingly supportive of, of providing. But with that, when, when you have a project that's adding, you know, something like, let's say, $90 million project, that's paid back over a number of years, but you, you end up bumping up taxes for those years by a fair amount. Well, a high school can be a lot more. High schools in this area are now going at around $300 million to maybe four, or, or even more, depending on how large a community. When you, even at a 30-year bond payment, when you go from nothing to paying back that bond, that's a big jump. So our Capital Stabilization Fund is a fund that we've been building up so that as those projects come online, we can start drawing money from there as well as from property taxes. So this is advanced planning to make it a little less of a shock on taxpayers' wallets.
Just, just as a follow, how often do these projects get proposed? I mean, do they happen, at least any of the major projects? Do they happen every year, every five years? Is there a certain cooldown between the projects that has to happen? Or is it just whenever something needs to happen, it gets brought up?
So that's a really good question. That is part of our capital planning for the community, and the, there is an annual report that goes out to members of the community that includes a five-year capital plan. But we're actually looking at things at, with a much longer horizon. We have a 10-year capital plan for school buildings, looking at what construction might need to occur. That's somewhat driven by projections for enrollments and, but, and, and evaluation of major systems within each of these buildings. And the Facilities Department has a 30-year capital plan where they look at all of the buildings that they maintain, all of the major systems, and they know what their life expectancy is, like a HVAC, a heating and ventilation and air conditioning system has maybe a 20-year expected lifespan. So they, when a new one is put in, they, they know that, they know when it's being maintained, and they're tracking when that expense is likely to happen. So we try to avoid having too many projects come at the same time, because that becomes sharp changes in, in taxes. Sometimes you can't avoid that. For example, the Estherbrook School was, was replaced earlier, the Hastings School was expected to be replaced before Estherbrook, but in the Estherbrook case, there had been the discovery of PCBs, which are carcinogen, and we needed to first isolate those PCBs and then tear down the building to remove them. We could have just removed them and tried to repair the building, but that would have been much more expensive and would not have been as nearly as effective as replacing it. So that created a bump in, in our, our planning, but it's the kind of thing that we are looking at every year to see how are things changing? Maybe a system is in better shape than we expected, and it can live longer than its projected lifespan, and sometimes you get systems that fail early. So all of those are, are ways that we look at the plan to make it so that there is a steady set of projects.
I think as some of the projects that I've seen, well, I mean, there are many, but the solar panels at Lexington High School, and I believe the other day I was walking around the Diamond Middle School campus, and I saw that they're putting up solar panels as well, it seems, in their parking lot. And so this whole idea of connecting environmental sustainability resources with our schools and other infrastructure is really important. And because over the past few years, the threat of climate change has gained a lot of attention, especially as dangerous events like wildfires, heat waves, tropical storms have become more and more common. And as a result, there have been calls for improved environmental sustainability across the country, and as Lexington is a forward-thinking town, we've been no exception. So what actions has the Select Board taken to fight the climate crisis? And could you describe any plans you have to make Lexington more sustainable and the plans to prepare our communities for future climate threats?
So let's start with that last bit first. One of the things that we just passed in the annual town meeting, which was in the springtime, was Article 29, which was a petition to the legislature to allow the community to regulate the use of fossil fuels in new construction and major renovations. This is not a power that towns have, that this is controlled by the state, and what we said is for us to meet our climate action plan, our, our getting to net zero plan, we needed to accelerate changes in the way building goes. And, and one of the best things to do is when you're, when you're in a hole and it's a problem, first thing you should do is stop digging deeper into the hole. So in, in this world, what, what we're looking at is, is the, the effect that fossil fuel-driven infrastructure has on our global climate, and we would like to move a lot of infrastructure over to clean-powered energy, renewable energy sources that are largely electricity. Now, Article 29 is the request to, for the legislature to allow us to enact those kinds of bylaws. That's the most recent thing we do, and it's something that I think will have the greatest short-term effect for us, should we be given that power. Before that, we did it, for municipal buildings, we enacted our own policy that said, we, for anything that is of reasonable size, so all the schools, all, you know, the, the fire station and the like, those are all electric buildings. And when we first started this a couple of years ago, didn't quite make everything all electric, but we've been shifting over as the technology has improved. And the big advantage about all-electric is that as the electric grid becomes, draws on generation from sustainable sources, it becomes greener, and the building you built five years ago becomes greener as a result. If you had put in a gas-fired furnace, on the other hand, it doesn't matter how green the rest of the world gets, you're still burning gas for the duration of that building, and it's designed for that kind of system. So that's, if that's a big thing going forward. If you look backwards a bit, Lexington has been a leader in this area, and it's among a set of, of leadership communities in, in Massachusetts. We passed our first sustainable building policy in 2005, and we became one of the first five green communities in the Commonwealth. And then in 2013, Town Meeting passed a, a resolution that said we need to consider climate change in all appropriate decisions and planning processes, and we've taken that to heart. So we've, the, the solar energy deployments that you've mentioned are, are part of that. So we are, we put in a 1.1 megawatts of solar energy on the library and five schools back in 2014, and then in 2017, we added 2.2 megawatts out at Hartwell Avenue in the composting facility, and we're now in the process of putting out about 2.6 megawatts of solar canopies at seven of the schools over the parking lots. And, and this together is going to generate 64% of Lexington's municipal energy. And that's great, but the municipal consumption is only a small percentage of town as a whole. So one of the other things we did was in 2017, we launched a Community Choice Municipal Aggregation Program for electricity for residents and, and commercial purchasers, and that means about 110 million kilowatt hours of, of electricity that's used in Lexington is now coming from 100% renewable electricity sources, and it's for over 10,000 customers. And the best part of this is not only is this all greener, but we've been able, because we're negotiating for the town as a whole, we've been able to get cheaper prices than what ever source provided on their we've been able to get cheaper prices than what ever source provided on their basic rates. So it's been a win-win, win all around. The other, the other things that we've done is, you know, it's good to do all sorts of projects, but it's really important to also put a plan in place. And in two thousand and eighteen, the Selectmen adopted the Sustainable Action Plan and the Getting to Net Zero Emissions Plan, which provide a way of looking at various sectors within the town and how to think about the effects of climate change and, and actions to take. So these are all things I'm very proud of. And, and, and as I said, probably the, the most significant from a municipal part perspective is in two thousand and nineteen when we passed the Integrated Building Design and Construction Policy that moved us to have to consider how to provide sustainable buildings as we go forward for the buildings that, that town builds.
Yeah, I just think it's really, really fantastic that you guys are doing such a great job acknowledging the future that we're going to face and the increasing threats that we have in our future and what steps we have to take to kind of slow down climate change. And I think that the plans that are in place now are definitely a great step in the direction of reducing our carbon footprint and improving our odds in the fight against climate change. So that's great to hear as someone who is really passionate about climate. So just to transition a bit, we wanted to talk a bit about the pandemic and how it's economically impacted individuals and businesses across the nation, and of course, also in Lexington. So unemployment rates have gone up, and some employers have been forced to lay off their workers because of rising supply costs and the inability to pay their workers as a result. And also, some businesses have had to shut their doors, declare bankruptcy because of financial challenges that have occurred because of the pandemic, because of lost business and other related factors. So has the Select Board played a role in financially assisting Lexington residents and business owners during these times? And if so, what have you guys done to this effect?
So the Select Board has had limited ability to work in this area, but we have done certain things. But one of the things we've done is passed adjusted ordinances for, to make it easier for businesses in the center in particular, things like allowing restaurants to have outdoor seating permits, outdoor salon permits, help guide some of the federal and state resources that, that were funding support for businesses. Now, a lot of this was actually done by staff, but it's under the policy direction of the board. So one of the things that was able to accomplish was about four point four million dollars worth of financial support to Lexington businesses. Ninety-one of these businesses were supported, and of those, seventy-one were women and minority-owned businesses in town. We've also secured some funding for economic development initiatives in town, about a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars, and then another hundred and twenty thousand dollars in technical assistance grants. Now, we were able to do this largely because there was an emergency order by the state. So there was legislation passed that allowed us to make some changes that we otherwise wouldn't have been able to. Things like those outdoor seating permits, we were able to do, even though previously they wouldn't have been allowed. And so I'm very thankful for that funding that's coming to us from the federal government and from, from the state. I should also say that when it comes to individuals, we've had great support out of our Human Services Department to help people go through challenging times. I mean, they're there all the time, but during the, this pandemic, they've really stepped up. And they've been able to channel funding we've received, both through generous donors in the community. All donations that went to the Fund for Lexington last year were earmarked for support for victims of COVID- nineteen, people who had had some financial impact. Similarly, Takeda Pharmaceuticals, which is a major employer in Lexington, donated two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to that fund to help support Lexington families impacted by COVID- nineteen. So that, that's been tremendous. In parallel, the, the school department has also been amazing. There was a program that was established through Federal Focus to provide for meals for any individual in the community, and in particular, any individual under age twenty-two, or any family with individuals under age twenty-two, were able to get a, a meal from the, the school lunch facilities. And they, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but they produced thousands and thousands of meals a week for the community. For, it was for anybody, it wasn't need-based, but there were certainly a, a reasonable number of families in town that had the need for that kind of facility and were able to get it. I, I wish we were out of this pandemic, but it's, we're still with us, though I think we're learning how to cope a little bit better.
As you mentioned, we all wish that the pandemic was over, but again, it's, it's still not over, but definitely that the number of active coronavirus cases locally has decreased due to the successful vaccination campaigns that have been pushed across Massachusetts. And so as a result, safety protocols that were put in place to control COVID- nineteen transmission, including the mandatory masking and physical distancing measures, have been gradually either lowered or taken away. However, with the rise of the Delta and other viral variants of COVID- nineteen, the case numbers have begun to take upwards again, which has been a cause for concern for public health experts. How is the Select Board coordinated reopening plans for the town amidst the continuing threat of COVID- nineteen? I know you've talked a lot about infrastructure and especially maintaining the infrastructure, so what has been done to that sense with regards to reopening? And do you have a sense of maybe when life will truly return to normal in Lexington?
So for that last question, the honest answer is I really have no idea. The, I, I suspect that that Delta variant is not the last mutation of this virus. So we will be learning to deal with changes for quite a while, I expect. That said, we have, for about a year, we had closed our municipal facilities for in-person service, right? All the services in town were available through remote access, through some sort of computer-mediated mechanism or by phone. But beginning this summer, we've reopened offices where you can come in and, and make changes in person. What I understand is that not that many people have done that yet, in the sense of the on-premises visits by residents are still relatively small in number. I think that's a good thing. There, certainly there are some people who find it easiest to get those services by going in person, but a lot of people are making use, continue to make use of the electronic access to these systems. With regard to masking, the, the practice has been for employees to wear masks when encountering the public. There isn't, given that the executive order has expired, we don't have the jurisdiction to mandate that, but we recommend it. And, and I wholeheartedly recommend wearing a mask when you're inside a building. The CDC just came out with revised suggestions, suggesting even people who are fully vaccinated should wear masks when entering into areas that are smaller and the like. And my understanding is that the school department just issued their plan for the fall. Again, this is under the jurisdiction of the school superintendent and the school committee. But my understanding is that they have chosen to require masking for students and I, and, and anyone who's inside a school building. And I think that's a very good choice, especially given that students under the age of twelve don't have access to a, to a inoculation. The, and even for those members of the public, and I'll say Lexington has done a great job in going out and getting vaccinated. We are, the last time I looked at the numbers, we were in the low to mid ninety percent range for those eligible for getting a vaccine, haven't gotten. And that's great. But even vaccinated individuals can be carried, can, can get a breakthrough infection and can certainly carry the contagion on to people who aren't. And, and to date, our younger population just is ineligible for receiving a vaccine, so we, we need to be very careful.
Yeah, that's definitely something that we need to keep in mind as the pandemic continues to evolve. And of course, the best weapon we have against COVID- nineteen is vaccination. And until the younger generation, specifically like two years old to eleven years old, has that access, there will still be lingering risk because we still have that sizable contingent of the population that can't get that vaccine. And of course, there will still be that danger. Now, just to transition a bit, I remember that you mentioned earlier that it's important to you that everyone has a voice, has a platform for their voice to be heard. So we wanted to connect that to politics a bit and mention how for many people, getting into politics is tough, especially at the local level. And this often leads to people having their opinions and thoughts being not heard because politi, politics can be hard to understand, and some residents may not even realize that they can participate in their community's politics through events like interactions with Select Board members, Town Meeting members, voting, and other such measures. And in response to all this, how can politics become more accessible for all citizens? And do you think there's anything that the Select Board can do to fix this problem?
So this is a perennial problem. We, we've spoken a little bit about voting in general. I think the, the key thing for people to get involved is to register to vote when they're able to. And I'll say for the younger generation, if you're sixteen, you can pre-register to vote. And as soon as you turn eighteen, you will then already be eligible, you will already have been registered and go forward. And if you are of voting age, that you exercise that franchise. People think about federal elections and statewide elections as what's important, but the truth is that every election is important, and there's a lot of your day-to-day life that is controlled by the municipal government. So, so, so learning about what's happening in town and, and voting is really important. That said, I know it's hard, in part because communication vehicles are difficult. It used to be that there was a single newspaper in town, and most households would read it, and they'd, they'd get this sense of what's happening in town. Readership in, in the local paper has, has plummeted, so not that many people read it. The internet has generated a proliferation of different information sources, so people getting information from all sorts of different things and not getting a common view of what's coming, happening in town. And, and, and people are distracted. So it is really hard, and, and I'll underscore how hard it is by saying, a lot of municipal elections in Lexington will have a voter turnout of single-digit percentages. Eight to nine percent is not uncommon. In a, in a more contested election, you might see in the mid-teens. And when it comes to a, a debt exclusion vote or a voter operating budget override vote, then we'll probably see a, a larger percentage, thirty, forty, maybe fifty percent. The only time we tend to see large turnouts is when it's, when the municipal election, which is conducted in March, the first week of March, is coincident with the presidential primaries. Then we will see a huge turnout. And then, even then, not everybody will take out the vote in the municipal election because there's a separate ballot from the primary. But at least they're there. So you, we, we try all sorts of things. A couple of years ago, we added to the operating budget the position of a public information officer to help coordinate messaging. And that has improved the way messages get out to the public, but there's still a lot of people who aren't being reached. The town runs something called Citizens Academy, and that's actually, we're, we're in August right now. And the signup is available on the town website. The Citizens Academy is a eleven-week course, I think, where it's, it's one night a week for two hours, where the students in the course get to see different parts of the government. They see both the elected portion and the operating portions. They get to go visit the fire station and see the trucks and, and look at the equipment. They go to the, the police headquarters, they go to the schools. And they really learn from middle and senior management what, how the town operates. And they learn all about how the governance of the town works, and that's a great system. A lot of more recent Town Meeting members have gotten their start by taking that course and then getting involved. The other thing that's, for a municipality like Lexington, we have a lot of committees that focus on specific subject areas. And they are advisory groups to the Select Board or to, mostly to the Select Board. And those are opportunities for people to, with a relatively low investment of time, get involved in what's happening in town and start learning about how they can influence direction. So I, I recommend those activities, the, the Citizens Academy for sure. And then, you know, trying to get involved in an open committee meeting to, to participate. And I'll, I'll also point out, all of these meetings are open meetings. So even if you're not a member of the committee, you're able to attend. And, and almost all of these groups are consensus groups, and they will listen to the, the public that is not a committee member, but is there and has an opinion. So it's, it's a great way to get involved.
So I guess just for our listeners, if you live in Lexington, Massachusetts, or even if you're interested, we'll include the links to the activities that Mr. Pato mentioned in the description of the episode. So you can check it out when you're done listening to the episode. Now, as just a point to touch on, you mentioned that it's not uncommon to see voter turnouts of eight to nine percent in the single digits, which is, I guess, pretty shocking. I mean, considering that even for the election, you might have, you're, you're definitely in the double digits for the federal election. So it, it just shows how, I guess, how much work still needs, still can be done to get people to come and actually vote for, I guess, whatever needs to be voted on locally. So I, just as a follow, I wanted to know, are there any other avenues of, like, any, any other methods of elections being considered? Like, I know maybe electronic ballots or some other form of, like, mail-in ballots? Or are they already a thing in Lexington so that people can use to have their vote be counted?
So, so that, those are helpful questions. And I'll, I'll say that for federal elections, especially presidential elections, Lexington will, will often have turnouts in the mid to upper seventies and even low eighty percent turnouts. It does really well. It's, it's municipal elections that people don't connect with as much, at all, almost. The, with respect to methods for voting, those are controlled by the state. So Lexington can't just choose to adopt mail-in ballots without the state allowing that. The state has during the pandemic provided for mail-in ballots for everyone without, no need for a, an excuse. You don't have to be traveling out of town or somehow unable to reach the precinct to vote and get a, a mail-in ballot. That, I'm hoping the state will continue going forward because turnout was better with the mail-in ballots than before. One of the things that happened over the past few years has also been the two weeks prior to Election Day, we've had in-person voting for early voting. That's also helped a little bit, and it's made the, the lines at the precincts shorter during the, the actual Election Day. One thing that's worked, and this isn't exactly on the voting side, but this is in participation in various municipal functions, has been, we've been using Zoom extensively throughout the pandemic. And that again, meetings are governed by the open meeting law in Massachusetts. And there was the executive order allowed for an expansion of the way remote meetings could occur so that everyone could be remote. Where I'm, I'm actually trying to get the state to extend that in perpetuity. Because we've seen that participation at Select Board meetings, participation at these various committee meetings has gone up significantly because people can participate from their homes, they don't have to They don't have to drive into the center of town. It could be that they're having dinner, it could be that they didn't have to get a sitter come to take care of their children. So they're able to participate and I think that's great. Similarly, during town meeting, as I said at the beginning of our talk, we are a participatory town meeting, an elected representative town meeting. We used a Zoom system and some software that I actually wrote for the town that allowed us to conduct our meeting entirely remotely. And we were one of a very few number of towns that did that. And that led us to have almost 100% attendance by our town meeting members, which never happened before. And, and I'm really encouraged by that and hope that we can adopt some hybrid method like that going forward, which really expands who can participate, right? You can, you can be a younger adult, a voter and, and have other commitments in your life. You might be, like when I was younger, I, my office was actually in either Palo Alto or in Bristol, England, because I worked in the research lab at HP. So I traveled a lot. With this remote participation, I would have been able to participate even when I was on the West Coast for a meeting. So it's, it's, I think, something that will help broaden participation. And then it's, it's going back to the shoe leather comment I made. It really is neighbor talking to neighbor and letting each other know about what's going on and, and getting excited about what is changing in the community and how to have your voice heard.
So I guess to sum it all up, it's that political participation is the best way for politically passionate people to help either get the resources that their communities need or to pass legislature or policies that they find important to them. So definitely the things that you've mentioned, I know that Ari and I both are interested in politics. I know that for myself, I made sure to indicate that I wanted to pre-register for voting when I got my driver's license. So I think definitely that the stuff that you've mentioned has been really important for, especially for people my age or maybe a little bit older, if they want to get into politics as well. So now, before we end the episode, we wanted to know what in your opinion is the hardest part of your job? And what do you feel is the most fulfilling?
Well, in, in one way, the hardest part is knowing that in, while municipal governments in Massachusetts is nonpartisan, there are lots of opinions. And in Lexington, we have a community that is, is tends to participate more and is, has a lot of opinions. So one of the hard parts is knowing that as I listen to the community and, and am acting to try to satisfy, there are going to be times when there is, there is no solution that is going to satisfy everybody's interest. And that most of the time, those diverging opinions are, they're reasonable. It's not that there is, you know, one thing that is right and one thing that's wrong. It's more that there are different ways of doing things and passionate opinions about what way we should go. So knowing that you can't satisfy everybody is in many ways, the hardest part of the job. And the most fulfilling piece is that, you know, I know that change is hard and that I can, but I can see that even though it takes time, by being involved locally and putting in that energy and effort, good change happens. And, and watching that makes me very, very satisfied.
All right, that brings us to the end of our questions for you, Mr. Pato. Thank you again for those really, really in-depth answers. I was really happy with a lot of the insights that you gave us and the perspectives that you gave us on a lot of things that ordinarily we wouldn't have known about or understood about, you know, the innate workings of our town's government. Because oftentimes, again, the reason why we started this episode was because we noticed that there wasn't a lot of attention being given to the importance of local politics. And you really shined a light on that. So thank you again. Thank you so much for coming onto the podcast today and we greatly appreciate your time.
It's been my pleasure.
That was our discussion with Mr. Joe Pato. If you're interested in learning more about the Lexington Select Board and the activities that Mr. Pato explained within the episode, check out the description for a link to his website where he outlines his goals and plans in office.
And with that, thanks for tuning into this episode of Open Floor.
Please follow us on your podcast platform of choice. A full list of where you can find us is available at openfloor.me/listen.
Additionally, follow us on Instagram at Open Floor Podcast or on Twitter at The Open Floor for updates on whenever we upload a new episode and much more. Also, please consider supporting the podcast by visiting our website at openfloor.me.
I'm Ali Musallei.
And I'm Ariane Narian.
And we'll see you in the next episode of Open Floor.